Go ahead and call this meeting of the Moberly City Council to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Here.
Kimmons.
Here.
McEwen.
Here.
Graff.
Here.
Scubik.
Here.
Thank you. Everyone should have seen tonight's agenda. It should have been in your packet. Is there any changes that anyone would like to make to the agenda this evening? Hearing none, entertain a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the agenda has been approved. Also in your packet, you should have received the minutes for the city council meeting for December 2nd and December 11th. Are there any corrections or changes to these minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve tonight's, the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
With motion and second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the minutes stand approved as written. Mr. Bogowski, any visitors this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we are joined by Allison Boyd, who will be our new finance director permanently on December 30th. So welcome to her.
Awesome. Allison, we'd like to welcome you to the team, like we have several others that have joined us in the last several months. We look forward to everything that you bring to the table and excited to welcome you, get you on board and get things rolling. So excited and good to have you. Thank you. If there's anybody that wishes to speak to the council this evening, please come up and grab a green card from the clerk, fill it out with your name and address. You'll have four minutes to address the council. We'll call you up a little bit later on in the meeting at the correct time. Public hearing and receipt of bids, number two. Actually, let's take one step back. I want to recognize a couple of people really quick. This past weekend, we had our safety banquet and awards dinner, and we recognized a couple of people with an award that we called the above and beyond award. Just really good job employee, is it employee of the year? Is that what you'd call it?
It functions similar to that, but we call it above and beyond. Just recognition of someone who has really contributed in an outstanding way to the city.
Very good, very good. Well, I'd like to recognize those people, Jacob Button from the Moberly Parks and Recreation Department and Mr. Steve Wilson, who is also here with us. Like to recognize you guys and thank you for the hard work. Appreciate it very much. So moving right into public hearing and receipt of bids, number two, receipt of bids for the Kiwanis Park Phase Two. Looks like we received two bids on that, is that correct? Three bids on that, correct?
Three firms bidding on it.
Three firms on that, okay. So we need to approve or accept those as received? So entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, bids will be marked as received. Number three, receipt of bids for ARPA Wabash Heights Stormwater Improvement Project. How many did we receive on that one? Three as well?
Four.
Four, okay. We need to mark those as approved as received as well. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, bids will be marked approved as received. Number four, receipt of bids for ARPA Fennel Building Improvement Projects. Can't tell how many bids we've received on that one.
Three bidders.
Three bidders on that one as well, okay. We have a motion to approve those as received.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we'll mark those as received as well. Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes tonight items five through 10. These items are considered routine and will be adopted with a single vote. Does any council member wish to remove any of the items for separate discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion to read tonight's consent agenda? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first and only reading, please.
Bill number R 1753, a resolution of the City of Moberly, Missouri authorizing application for a mobile ticketing grant through the Missouri Department of Transportation. Bill number R 1754, a resolution of the City of Moberly, Missouri authorizing the Moberly Fire Department to make a grant application through the Assistance to Firefighters Program for First Responder Equipment. Bill number R 1755, a resolution authorizing and accepting a change order to the contract to replace the wastewater treatment plant digester liner with Emery Sappan Suns. Bill number R 1756, a resolution accepting the bid of Van Venter Engineering Cogent Incorporated and authorizing seal repair of a flight pump at Seven Bridges Road Lift Station. Bill number R 1757, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a financial assistance agreement with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources for the Seven Bridges CSO Basin Stormwater Improvement Project. And bill number R 1758, a resolution accepting the bid of and authorizing contracting with PS Commercial Play LLC for Phase Two of the Kiwanis Park Project.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion or question from anyone on the council? I entertain a motion for the acceptance of the tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries and the consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Number 11, an ordinance. Mr. Scubik.
Yes, Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a cooperative agreement for tourism promotional services with the Moberly Chamber of Commerce. I ask that this be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a cooperative agreement for tourism promotion services with the Moberly Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a cooperative agreement for tourism promotion services with the Moberly Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Last chance. Any further discussion or questions? Entertain a motion for the approval of the ordinance.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubik.
I'm staying.
Thank you very much. The ordinance has been approved. Number 12, an ordinance. Ms. Graff.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing execution of a state block grant agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation for tea hangers at the Omar Inn Bradley Airport, and I ask that it be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing execution of a state block grant agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation for tea hangers at the Omar Inn Bradley Airport.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments from the council? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing execution of a state block grant agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation for tea hangers at the Omar Inn Bradley Airport.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubik.
Yes. Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Number 13, an ordinance. Mr. Kimmons.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing contracting with Brown and Root Industrial Services LLC for the Wabash Heights Stormwater Improvements Project and approving financial assistance agreement with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources for the ARPA grant funding of the project. I ask that it be read twice for consideration of passage.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmons. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first reading, please.
An ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing contracting with Brown and Root Industrial Services LLC for the Wabash Heights Stormwater Improvements Project and approving the financial assistance agreement with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources for the ARPA grant funding of the project.
Thank you. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing contracting with Brown and Root Industrial Services LLC for the Wabash Heights Stormwater Improvements Project and approving the financial assistance agreement with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources for the ARPA grant funding of the project.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for the approval of the ordinance.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubik.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Number 14, an ordinance. Mr. McEwen.
Mayor, I have an ordinance approving the bid of Five Oaks and Associates LLC for the Fennel Building Community Center and ask that it be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first reading, please.
An ordinance approving the bid of Five Oaks and Associates LLC for the Fennel Building Community Center.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from council? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance approving the bid of Five Oaks and Associates LLC for the Fennel Building Community Center.
Thank you. Last chance. Any further discussion? Very last chance. Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for the approval of the ordinance.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubik.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Number 16, a resolution. Mr. Scubik.
Is it 15?
I'm sorry. Oh, whoops. Number 15, an ordinance, yes.
Yes, Mayor, we have an ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding regarding the obligation of the SLF RF funds with the Moberly Fire Department. I ask that this be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first reading, please.
An ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding regarding obligation of SLF RF funds with the Moberly Fire Department.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding regarding obligation of SLF RF funds with the Moberly Fire Department.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubik.
Yes. Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Number 16, a resolution. Ms. Graff.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the City of Moberly, Missouri to pay expenses due between November 28th and December 11th, 2024, in the amount of $2,017,855.73, and I ask that it be read once for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first and only reading, please.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the City of Moberly, Missouri to pay expenses due between November 28th, 2024, and December 11th, 2024, in the amount of $2,017,217, I'm sorry, $17,855.73.
It's such a big number, it's just hard to get out, isn't it?
Just wanted to make sure I was saying it right.
It's an expensive month, for sure. I hereby certify that there's sufficient money standing to the credit of the City of Moberly, Missouri, unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution to meet the requirements of this resolution. City Treasurer Gregory L. Hodge. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? About a second.
Second.
Motion is seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, resolution has been approved. Thank you. Each month, we ask the department heads to do, oh, a quick overview of things that they've accomplished during the month to the council, some of the big projects that they're working on, and just try to keep the council up to date on certain things that are happening. Anyone on the council have any questions for any department heads regarding the reports? Nope. No questions this month? Okay. We appreciate the department heads working on those and being as detailed as they are. They're very helpful in keeping us informed. Number 18, ratification of mayoral appointments for council member liaisons to the park board and planning and zoning board. Want me to go ahead and take that, or?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you can just announce your appointments and then do a voice vote to ratify.
Okay, very good. At this time, we're going to move Mr. McEwen to the planning and zoning board, and then we will also be nominating Mr. Scubik, and he will be going to the Moberly Parks and Recreation Board. I think they can both offer, you know, quite a few things on each board, and I look forward to their contributions to that. So I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, it has been approved. We'll go ahead and open the floor at this time. If there's anybody that would like to address the council, bring your green card up, and you'll have four minutes to do so. All right, looks like we don't have any volunteers for this month. So that is all that we have on the agenda for the council meeting this evening. So no further business. We have a motion to adjourn this meeting and move into a work session, followed by a closed session, to discuss the status of legal matters. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubik.
Yes.
Right, thank you. We are adjourned, and thank you everyone for coming. We'll move right into the work session. Number one, receipt of quote for Agria, is that how that's pronounced? Agria 9600 mower?
Yes, there, we have been trying to maintain our slopes and stuff for several years out there. Well, I should say MoDOT slopes along 63, and we have other areas around town that are steeper than what we can safely run equipment that we have on. This would be an option where we could maybe work and partner with that, MoDOT, to mow those, and we could probably use this thing in other races in town where we have steep slopes that are hard to mow. We've been trying to back up it with, you know, brushhogs, or we mow some of it with the grasshopper, but this is, will run very steep slopes, and it's a 48-inch cut, two hours an acre. I mean, we've looked at other products like this. I know these are expensive, but this is a very heavy-duty one that other metro areas in Missouri have utilized and have it in place where they've had a lot of breakdowns with other lesser machines. This one's kind of unique. It has a gas-powered engine that drives electric, a generator that powers the electric motor, so it's actually an electric drive, and still.
As far as the, obviously, this is a pretty expensive piece of equipment.
Yeah.
And how does this compare if we just hired somebody to mow it? I know there's a gentleman that's approached me recently and asked me if we would be interested. Is that a better option than this expensive piece of equipment, or are we better off in this direction?
I've tried, we've had it mowed previously, you know, with big equipment and brushhogs, and I think it was, you know, paid several thousand dollars per mowing. And I tried to get a quote for that to be mowed out there on those steeper slopes, and I was having trouble getting, people didn't want to touch that steepness of that. So when you're trying to get into something, we have the landscaping, and one of the things I was thinking about, you know, was you had the landscaping at all the interchanges that we put in with tourism funds several years ago. They're trying to maintain those. When you have it like as a field basically around it, it doesn't really look very attractive. And so we're trying to go, maybe try to get a more mowed type of situation there, and to have like a lawn-type situation, at least on the slopes around that landscaping. I mean, the only thing they're going to get up there is probably some big equipment that when it's any kind of soft, I mean, we have the ruts, and it tears it up pretty good, does knock it down, but you're at least thousands of dollars for per mowing.
I noticed in your document, you'd kind of put an emphasis on tourism or areas that people that aren't particularly from town, you know, would see a lot, or when you're passing through town. And I know that's been an emphasis of this council, is to try to beautify things and get some of those areas cleaned up and looking a little bit better for people that don't live here. So I guess the other question would be, how do you plan to pay for it? Where's that going to come from?
So what we are proposing here, if this is something you want to move forward with, is going to those who bid on lease purchase equipment for the city, going to the low bidder and asking if they'll honor their bid, and if they don't, go to the second lowest bidder, which was only 10 basis points off, and then doing a three-year lease purchase starting next budget year. So no impact to this budget year. Tom is also proposing to pursue a grant from Myrma for $7,500, because this is a safety improvement. Obviously, it's much safer for us to do this than for us to send guys out on equipment. So that qualifies for their safety grant as well.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
I've got a question, Eric.
Yes, go ahead.
Tom, you had mentioned that you come to be working with MoDOT on this. Do they currently do some of the mowing on those areas?
MoDOT does three times a year perimeter mowing of the interchanges, which they're all MoDots. And so, I mean, that's just a 15-foot fringe around the edge, but, you know, we're seeing a lot of tezel, and they have done a lot of spraying. I'll give them that, you know, try to knock that out. But we also have a lot of the growth back of the small pear trees and stuff out there. Just if you look at their cattails, it's not a very attractive one, and they do every other year a full mow out. Now, you know, I've tried to press them, you know, Boone County seems to do that, you know, every year they mowed a 22 junction year, every year, and but that's just, that's what they're going to do. Once every other year, full mow out, and three times a year, they'll do a 15-foot perimeter mow. And so we were going to try to work with them. We met with them several years ago, about 19, I think it was, we did a joint program where we did wildflowers and native grasses with the conservation department, try to do something in that area. It just really didn't take. And so they've all agreed that this is probably our best method forward.
So it would be mowed more frequently than, I mean, you're talking maybe once a month or as needed, I guess?
I would, MoDOT would probably still do the full mow on it every other year. I'm trying to get them to do a once every year to commit to that. They would do the perimeter mow, and then I would see, seeing like up near the landscaping areas on the slopes, what I was looking at was if we could get this to do those areas, and then on some of the low areas near the sidewalks and stuff that we have along 24, you know, mow that out with a grasshopper. We have some broader grasshoppers we can bring out and knock that down.
Thank you.
I was just curious, and you kind of touched on it, but how many times a month do you think you would use this piece of equipment?
Well, on the slopes alone, I mean, you're probably going to be, you know, I would say, to keep it down, I mean, every three weeks or so in the summertime, and then, but it could also be used in other locations. I did mention, other departments don't have a lot of heavy needs, but I mean, you know, we could even mow out, you know, detention basins where, because it will go down swampy locations with that. I mean, we've got slopes along the, our lagoons and things like that that are pretty steep, you know, this could be utilized. I'm not saying that's what we'd have to use it for, but it could be in service more than just out there on the highway slopes.
What about maintenance? Is maintenance, what do they suggest, you know, how much every three years, how much per year?
What, these machines are, so one of the things about them, they don't have any, like, so there's no hydraulics. It's just, like I said, it's got the gas engine that runs into a generator, and those are powered directly to the rear, the tracks, so it's minimized on that. It's a heavy German design, heavier blades. I mean, it's, the ones I've looked at in the communities, some places have had bought up to five mores of different brands, and they're all down. So this one seems to be the one having more success as far as durability. I mean, so speculating on how much it would take, I would say, you know, you're going to do some blade sharpening on things like that, because they were mowing up to three-inch diameter trees with this thing.
Interesting. Well, it's definitely an expensive piece of equipment. It's not, it's not cheap. I'm not 100% sold. I guess, I think I want to do a little bit more research, but I have no problem moving it forward into the next council meeting. But I guess the other question was, how come the estimate had another city at the top of it? How come it didn't have us?
That was the one that they had given for Grandville, I believe it was, or Grandview, or it was, and that was the price. And so he was just showing that was a quote for that, and they said they would honor that price, and so I can get one for us specifically. That was their price he would give to the end of the year. He said he might even do a little better on that.
Okay.
Don't take that, I'm not saying this is what we have to do.
Sure.
I'm just saying, if you want to maintain those slopes and see those slopes look better, because I've had a lot of complaints about, you know, I drive through along the way to St. Louis and Kansas City, and you drive through those communities that have their interchanges mowed out nicely and how well they look. So that's the way we can do it.
And I know that's been a focus, and, you know, talked about lots of times, you know, amongst this group. So yeah, I'd just like to do a little bit more research, but I have no problem moving it forward. What are you guys, you guys okay with that? Okay. Okay. Move that one forward to the next council meeting. Thank you, Tom. Consideration of an appointment to the Board of Adjustment to fill one of two open seats.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've had two openings on the Board of Adjustment for quite some time. We did get an application from Josh Barrett, so we are recommending appointment if you would wish to move forward with that.
Okay. Any questions from council on this appointment? Any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay, hearing none, we will move this one forward. Number three, Bartlett and West Professional Services Agreement, Amendment Number One for the Moberly Industrial Park Extension. Mr. Wilson? Mr. Above and Beyond?
It's short.